I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Paul Jenderski is absent. Ed Tidoff.
Present.
Mike Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
And Lois Tyler is absent.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Add letter, add letter D tree beds. They should be on your desk, grab one and pass them outward. For Presidente.
Which stack move?
Yep. One each, please. Motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Village Financial Statements. Butcherless name. Hello.
Bertheum. Bertheum?
Yes. My apologies. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ken Bertheum, with Bertheum and Company, CPAs. So, I'm pleased to present the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended March 31st, 2023. The audit went very smooth this year again. We had no problems, difficulties, or differences here. Received excellent help from the village staff. No problem there, no, very good. Bookkeeping is handled in a pretty efficient and proper manner. They use proper software and procedures. Everything looked pretty good, okay? So, as a result of our audit work, we issued a report and opinion on the financial statements. You find in the booklet, if you have that. Financial statement booklet, maybe you can lend your hand out. It's called Independent Auditor's Report. That's the opinion that these financial statements.
Can you read it?
They do fairly present the financial position as of March 31st, and results of operations for the year then ended. So, we have no exceptions to that report. And that is the best report that you can get, okay? So, I'd just like to briefly run through the financial statement with you, some of the highlights here. In the report, there's a section called Management Discussion and Analysis in there. You would find the statement of activities for the year compared with the prior year. Overall, the village again experienced very positive results in all of its activities. Governmental activities had an increase in net position of approximately $238,000. And the business-type activities had an increase of $171,000 in net position. So, so that's a good trend. Previous year was similar, we saw similar results. When looking at the statement, I noted that the property tax revenues held up pretty good at $588,000 for last year compared to $565,000 for the prior year. The tax millage rate that the village levies is 15%, and that's been the same for several years. No increase there, but the taxable SEB did go up about 4%. So, that's good for the village. Not so good for the taxpayer, but they're paying more, but the village got 4% more, okay? In the report, on page 11, you would find a statement of net position there. Statement of net position here is prepared on a full approval method of accounting, which means that it's created like a business, which show a balance sheet, where we include capital assets and depreciable assets like that. And all the long-term debts are also reflected in that statement. So, it gives you a true, a true picture of where the village really stands at that point in time. On this, on this statement, the village does continue to report an unrestricted net position deficit in its governmental activities. And deficit means that you have, for the governmental activities, you have more liabilities than you show assets. That's when we pulled out the capital assets, but the other activities there showed a deficit. Well, why is that? That's because pension and OPEB liabilities have to be reflected on this statement of net position. So, that's a very large liability, as you know, okay? The village has been very proactive in making extra payments into that pension plan for the last several years, and you're trying to get caught up on that. You know, it's, it's always difficult because you had that liability had built up for several years. But you're making progress on that, so it is getting better. When the, when you see a downturn in the stock market and that sort of thing, of course, that affects your liability, that pushes the liability up when the return on investment isn't so good, okay? But that's, hopefully that'll come back. It does go up in that, as you know. Page 14. In the report is the governmental funds balance sheet. Here, when we talk about funds and balance sheets for the governmental funds, we're talking modified accrual method of accounting, which means we're only looking at current available resources, like current assets, cash, receivables, and some payables, not the long-term debt. So, on that basis of accounting, these funds look great. You know, you have a general fund came in with a fund balance at the end of the year of approximately $1.1 million. When you compare that to your annual budget of about $1 million, that's pretty good. You got 100% of there. For the general fund last year, in addition to the fund balance, you had $199,000 of money from the ARPA funds, federal money. That has to be reflected as, as unearned income until it's spent. And so, you have that in addition to your fund balance, okay? The three street funds that you have continue to show a good fund balance. At the end of the year, you had $767,000 in those street funds. Of course, that, that is restricted for street work improvements, okay? Moving ahead to page 16. Page 16 is the governmental funds, statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance. All of these funds last year showed increases in fund balance, okay? So, that was also good. For the general fund, you had revenues of approximately $1,113,000. You had expenditures of $972,000 approximately. So, that left an excess revenue in the general fund of about $105,000. So, you don't get that, okay? And finally, on the page 21. Page 21 is the statement of cash flows for the business-type funds and the internal service fund, which is the equipment fund. Statement shows that the sewer and water funds are experiencing very positive cash flow operating results. Okay, so the sewer fund increased its cash balance by $86,000 to $784,000. And the water fund increased its cash balance by $43,000 to $193,000. So, the funds are in good shape. The equipment fund last year used up some of its cash. About $140,000 was spent to acquire the 2023 international dump truck, as you know. $140,000 there. But it still had a remaining balance, a cash balance of $103,000, okay? So, in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you again for allowing me to present the audit and work for the village chair. And I welcome any questions or comments.
Sounds out for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, public comment. Spacer Engineer Report, please.
Good evening. I believe everyone got a copy of the engineering report. Few items to add to that, so we'll go through Phase 1 project first. As everyone can see here, construction's still moving along out on 52. I think we've got about eight services left to do to get everyone onto the new water main. And then we will, they gotta do a couple more connections and probably start working back with restoration. Probably doesn't look like a whole lot of progress has been made this last month, but we did get all the sidewalk poured, we got some of the concrete driveways back. And these services, I mean, we knew they were gonna be slow. One, you know, somewhat, an issue we're kinda running into with some of the galvanized services and the, and the hookups in the interior of the houses. DPW's been doing a great job coordinating with, with the landowners, and Tito and Tyler have been doing quite a few of the hookups to save the village some money there. But that's kind of, you know, as far as challenges go on the project so far, I would say that's been our biggest one so far. Other than that, I think air construction, like I said, they're planning on finishing up on 52. They wanna get the driveways paved, all the topsoil seeding done, and then they're going to move over to Clinton Street and begin with that install. So, hopefully in the next couple weeks, we're off 52 and over there. They get some services they can do in the West Alley behind the library there as they move over. But so far, so good. Like I said, they're, they're making pretty good progress. If we remember, they said they anticipated it being out on Bell 17 weeks when they started, and I think we're at week 13 or 14, so. Maybe a little bit ahead of schedule, but don't wanna put the cart before the horse, and still a little bit, a little bit of work left to do out there. So, any questions on the project? I put the updated progress maps on, printed them off. Like I said, that blue, long blue line is all of the main that's been pressure-tested in service. You see there's a little bit of green on Charles and Clinton, that's main they even saw. You know, they dropped over there when they didn't have anything to do, or when we were shut down on 52 over the Fourth of July holiday, they slid over and put some of that in, so. Kept the project moving forward even though we couldn't work out there. And then you can see the remaining red and yellow is still where, where we gotta complete the work. You know, as, as we get off 52, we're going to start with the road, road portion of it as well.
Where are the bridges are, like, what did they have to do there?
So, the bridge project was an MDOT project, and that was a scour of prevention and cleaning project, where they removed debris and put some river rap on the banks and whatnot, so. That did not have been Hart done, correct me if I'm wrong, anything to do with the village, correct?
Okay.
They gave us some, another check to use the property that they didn't really even use.
Perfect.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you, but, okay.
No problem. Couple of projects I wanna add to the engineer's report, and I can get that updated and sent over back to Hart. But we discussed the Ithaca Road Water Main Extension. Residents have expressed that they, they'd like to possibly see the water main extended, which we can do through a special assessment district. Digging back through the plans, the, the water main was actually designed when they put the main down at Ithaca Road. So, you know, now it's just getting, getting it to the point where can we build it, get it permitted, and then assess it back to the residents, so.
I've been meeting for about a month on this. Approached four or five residents that are in support. And we used numbers from what Air Construction's already doing on 52 as part of our project, and it looks pretty feasible, and we could grab extra water customers for, for better.
And then the, you know, the thing, we, we talked about it with the sidewalk project, we talked about it through, but with the special assessment district, 51% of the land area within the district has to improve the project, otherwise it's out. So, like I said, I, I believe there's five parcels there where, where we, where we would be extending it to, so. I believe, like I said, we got the parcels pulled, we've got the plan pretty much designed for previously. Now, it's just putting everything together and pushing out and seeing if they wanna go forward with it, so. We met with Hart, talked about looking at some parking studies at, at the Kayak Launch as well as Coal Miners Park. Gotta dig into that and get back with him and see kinda what our options are and where we can go with it. And then we also have discussed the Safe House to School project, and Hart met with the schools, and that's gonna move forward. We want to kinda finalize up some of our preliminary estimates of cost, and the school's got some work to do on their end. But like I, I talked to Hart, and we're gonna get everything the village needs to have done on, on our end and, and put it back in their court, so. Happy while our asset management grant, I, I guess the only update I would have on that is, you know, as we're replacing these services, everything's being documented for, you know, accordingly. And we'll get that submitted on our, the service verification requirement that they have, so.
Great.
Any questions?
I just have one, fine.
Yes.
Going back to the, up at the two project there. I noticed that you went down, like, almost to the village limits on the one side, but you didn't on the other side, or you're not gonna do that on the other side?
So, we cross at Fort. And we were from Fort to the south village limit, that's where the water main was, and then we're just shooting services back across to reconnecting, and then we'll abandon that existing main. And I think the exist, the existing main is on the east side of the road, so.
Okay, I just wanted to hear.
Yeah, all the houses will be serviced, just the main room's on one side of the road.
Oh, gotcha, okay, alright.
Any other questions? If you guys have anything to get with Hart or Don, I'm more than happy to answer, so.
Everything just seems like it's been going so smooth. Why'd I say that?
We might need an extra tree planted on Bell where the sidewalks go from four foot to three foot.
Four foot to three foot?
Or whatever, whatever it was, they, they narrowed.
Yeah, five to four.
Five to four, okay.
We did go out with the forester from Relief Michigan today and kinda picked out spots that won't be the wires, or if it's near wires, trees that won't grow into them so that consumers doesn't cut them in 15, 20 years. But she's gonna review the plans for the spots that we kinda drove around and looked at, and then see if Clucks has that version, whether it's a white lilac or a pink or purple lilac or some hardy reds. But I will be in touch with those and projected places, some at Waterfall and some down Chesapeake where they've all been taken out. Tried to go Magnolia Lane down Chesapeake on the way into the village, but I got vetoed.
Still got two-thirds on which you want.
Ah, that's true.
Yeah, and on the sidewalks, we're, we're replacing what was actually there, so. Right. There was a four-foot sidewalk, that's what they got there. We're trying to, trying to keep it still a water main project. You know, sidewalks, it's expensive, so.
So, the ADA compliance on a sidewalk is minimum five foot, unless it's four, we can go down to a four-foot sidewalk. If that's a village standard, that's what we're pulling out. That's kinda where they stand. The reason why we make those wider, those flares at the road crossing, is that is ADA compliant. So, there's really no question. I mean, it's five foot, it's less than 2% slope and less than 7% running slope and all that. So, there's no, I mean, there, there should be no complaint on that as far as ADA compliance goes, so. Looks a little goofy, but it meets all federal court.
I wouldn't even have known, had neighbors across the road, three different ones, "Why is it going this way?" I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Council minutes for July 12th, 2023.
I wanna apologize if there wasn't both sides on that. It was one of those one-sided to two-sided, and I didn't hit the button. So, I did email them to you, just so you had them. But if you have any questions on the back page, it was the bids for the 1200 Brent Road, and then it was accept and file, DPW, police, building inspecting, and then Marie Rowe and Claire Devault with the championship signs.
Yes, we need some signs. Is the school owner anything to help out with it? I thought that's a joint project.
Kelly, Kelly's working on it.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the village council meeting for July 12th, 2023.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission and committee reports, EDA, August 4th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the planning commission date of July 20th, 2023.
It's DDA.
What did I say?
Thanks.
Oops, sorry, I got the wrong one. DDA, is that right?
Yeah. No, yeah. They're in the quarter, but yeah. What creature takes it for us? Also four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, we're on to the planning commission.
So, was there really a need for police at the fire department and history?
I can't speak to that, I don't know. I don't, from what I understand, no, but. The only thing I could think of was traffic control.
There need for police there.
There's a traffic issue.
Traffic control.
Multiple gawkers. Turned into almost a neighborhood block party, I mean, the residents living right in the area, they were all outside too, you know? But there was multiple cars.
Wanna check it out?
That's, that's kinda how it goes, I mean, anywhere you go, there's a fire, there's an audience, you know? Neighbors cross the road, have their line chairs, have their lawn chairs all lined up out there. But you wanna, you wanna yell about police presence, and, okay? Fire Department seemed to handle it pretty well, I thought.
Well, I was just thinking it wasn't a high-traffic area.
Right.
If we didn't have, if we didn't have an officer available, then I don't know what the problem is, 'cause the fire department generally takes care of it anyways.
Right.
For the most part.
The, the biggest problem was the daytime incident, the first one. Couple of weeks later, it was at night, so the night, there, I was at both on my bike, and there was not a lot of traffic down there, but.
We went down, 'cause my aunt was down there, we headed on to my aunt's, and we saw it, and we turned around and, you know, went back. So, I didn't, I didn't see any, or I thought there was any major traffic jams or anything. But I didn't see the people in the yard either, 'cause the trucks were blocking the road.
The daytime, when most of the cars were starting to pack in there, the fire department was already there. But there was mutual aid departments coming in that were having to weave through, you know, cars. Cars were slowing down, so, yeah. The slide, the slide, what's, what's the word on that?
Company said they communicated to the installers, it's time to give up here and put it on. Reached out again today.
They're coming from?
Arkansas.
That's not roped off anymore.
People have been playing since day one.
Yeah.
Even when it was roped off.
It has been impossible to keep people off, but I tried. There, there are boards on the one slide, so they can't go down, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's blocked off, they can't use the slide, it's not, it's. Right, right.
Okay, that's what I was worried about, 'cause I don't want some kid getting hurt and then coming to us.
Liability, yeah.
As a kid, that looked like the most enticing slide, though. I got to jump off halfway down.
Well, that's probably what they're thinking, and then they get hurt, and then they're coming down.
Achiever, won't they? As far as the rest of it, it looks pretty, it's pretty good, I mean.
You have questions, daily, multiple questions, and I've really pressed on the company that we need to move.
They've been pretty good, I tell you, well.
Mm-hmm. Getting the materials here, unloading, reloading, and guess what, it is busy.
I mean, they're paid, they're paid to do a job, mission, you know?
I think motion to accept planning commission, July 19th, 2023.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Parks and Recreation, July 20th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept Parks Recreation Minutes for July 19th, 2023. I'm sorry, July 20th, sorry.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications or Review Magazine?
I think we should do an article on our water project and get it in here.
They did one on our Duam grant, but not on our water project. We'll see if they, we've submitted a couple of options for them, and they haven't picked it up.
Really?
But they did do the Duam grant, the. But they did do the Duam grant, the inventory of the service lines.
It just seems to me like every month when I read this thing, it's more the bigger towns and not so much the smaller ones and.
And welcome to MML.
That's what matters.
So, I do sit on the finance committee to try to help with issues or help vote on things and, um, you know, we're just a little guy. I made a comment last month about the pension liability and how they're backfilling other municipalities. And come to find out, a lot of the managers in the state of Michigan applied for it. That money was really meant for three large, uh, cities. And so, they didn't get it and they were pretty, um, upset. And I commented that they're going to do the same thing with OPEB watch and the next day, or the next week, what legislation was introduced to do the same thing. So, we'll go after some OPEB funding if it's approved and hopefully the little guy gets some money. You know, they're backfilling Richland, they're backfilling Chesapeake.
Yeah, Chesapeake, I saw, yeah.
Yeah, so, it sticks to do the right thing the whole time and, and to watch others just ignore it, kick the can down the road. And somebody else will take care of it, um, well, and that's not my MO. But, uh, if they're going to put the OPEB stuff out there, we're going to go after it, try to get us to sixty percent or whatever it is.
When I read this thing, I tend to look for articles on smaller towns and hardly, if ever, you see anything on what's going on in smaller towns. It's always.
I, I will say the, all of the lobbyists, the majority of the people that work there, uh, prefer where they live and, and areas that are like-minded as them. That's the best thing I can say.
I might have to write in a letter.
Strongly worded.
Beerton won the excellence award.
What's that?
Beerton won the excellence award, so did Claire.
Well, I think we should be on that list.
Yeah, I should, yes.
There is a good article in there on, um, using tax increment financing to promote private investment, things like that. Just kind of background on, uh, TIP funding and I, I have seen, received some, um, inquiries into why we're using money to paint an obsolete water tower. Well, I explained that it's a tax increment financing project. It's not property taxes or taxpayers' dollars per se. Um, but I have to explain that, um, put together a tax increment financing one-on-one, uh, just so people have an idea where the money comes from. But it is a question that gets asked, so, it's a nice article on kind of what the projects are for. And the idea that it's to promote businesses or to make your town look nicer, to try to better place the work, live, and play, essentially.
Paying the claims.
Look at that. The total's on the back page and Paul's not here. He misses the big sign. He misses it on the back page. He demands that he's never here. He's never here.
I didn't even been there.
I, I just have a quick question here.
Yes.
Um, yeah, there was the audit information here.
Yep.
What's the different numbers here?
Those are the accounts that we pay it out of, um, based on, based on what we think the time spent, um, working on it. So, because street funds are state dollars, they're not looking at those, but they're looking at our general fund, looking at the DDA, looking at the sewer and the water and the equipment fund. So, all the funds that the village really, you know, spends money out of. And part of me in putting this together this month, um, you know, because the three ninety-four account, the DDA account, really isn't property taxes. We could cut that out. I do want you guys to see that still, but, I mean, that's a lot of our larger expenses and that's where a lot of the questions are asked. So, we could X that out. I probably won't, just because for transparency sake. But, I mean, that's the good thing about the back page. Like you said, it shows the three ninety-four and, you know, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars is a lot in a month. Uh, but those are different funding mechanisms that.
This P and L contract and paint the water tower, a hundred and fourteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it costs?
Correct.
Sorry. Oh, I didn't think it was that much, okay.
There's four coats, uh, three primers, the main coat, and then the logo was forty-eight hundred, I think, but. Um, they are, the DDA is required to spend an X amount. You're supposed to spend it. If the state sees that you're sitting on it and they will revoke the account.
So, this come out of DDA, right?
Correct, and that's on the final page. And that's kind of why I spoke to them.
And anybody that can paint that water tower?
Hey, nice show.
Yeah.
Wish the logo was a little higher, a little darker, but I'm not going up there.
You can always get, you can always get up there. A paintbrush.
I tried to get there to paint, but it got halfway up there and it's, oh no.
It's a little cage, for the record, and it's two grown men in a little cage standing face to face. It was very uncomfortable. And he started working, reaching for his phone and moving and the whole thing shakes and I was, I got a little sick. I tried.
No.
He's like, let me take a selfie. I'm like, we're not even high enough to warrant a selfie. I'm not going to show anybody how we've ever seen it is that I'm like ten feet off the ground, but.
I don't know that.
This was the start.
My body camera could have put on.
Oh, man, he's got, he's got the camera in my face. I'm like, we're good. Maybe now. Not good.
No. Sorry, I had to tease you about.
No, it's, it's fair. Should have closed my eyes.
Yeah.
See how high I get.
Ninety-five percent of us would all feel the same.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I'd be right there with you because I don't know if I could go ahead.
Watch them gentlemen go up and down a few times and I'm just like, yeah, they like the ground.
I don't want to be a few feet up, but not that. Yeah.
Make a motion to pay the bills for the month of July in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, fifty-two cents.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? New business.
Well, it could have been old, but it's new. Uh, we had a public hearing on the four dash one three. Uh, we had conflicting regu-, um, regulations regarding RVs in our ordinance. Scott caught it. Uh, so, the tax amendment in front of you removes the conflict and adds the exception for one vehicle in the front yard. Uh, meaning that you can have your cars in the driveway and a boat or a side-by-side or an RV. And then the remaining should, the remaining toys or, uh, boats and RVs and side-by-sides should be on the side of your yard. No closer than three feet to the neighbors, but, uh, so this is, went through the public hearing. We had one comment. You know, the planning commission recommends this, uh, this version to add in. Should you approve this, we'll have to send legal a notice of adoption to the paper, um, then it would take effect. But they thought this is the most fair, uh, at least stringent. And, um, again, as Scott has pointed out, it is complaint-based and, you know, try not to get into the, well, he called me out, so I'm going to call out X, Y, and Z and, and do it on merit. Um, you know, verify, trust but verify, give people time to make changes, uh, move their things before you really start going after them, you know. So, this is from the planning commission for you. Uh, Scott is at the hospital at the moment with a personal matter, uh, so he will not be here tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to write them down. Get answers from either Jason Ball or Scott if you have, uh, in-depth questions.
I don't see anything wrong with this one.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to text him, or, uh, to accept tax amendment four dash thirteen.
I'll support.
Your call on that?
Yes.
Jamie Kendall?
No.
Darcy McLean?
I still am looking this over. Sorry, so. I'll support.
Paul Janierski absent. Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Mike Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Lois Tyler is absent.
Old Fashioned Christmas Parade, set the dates and times.
So, this is for council to set dates and times of the Old Fashioned Christmas Parade. We've done the first Saturday in December. Um, three out of the four years I was here, I believe. Uh, we did the second Saturday, which doesn't work for Don, so, um, it is up to you to decide these things. Uh, we are having trouble finding trees. A lot of tree farms are closed for the next three years as they wait for, um, you know, some growth. We might have to do wreaths or something, decorate a wreath, um, donate. It's more about the cherry. We haven't chosen yet. Uh, we're going to meet, uh, DDA is going to meet to discuss and kind of get together on that. Uh, we've done the band, we've done the library, we've done the athletic association. I've heard that the robotics club, uh, is self, kind of self-funded.
They're self-funded, they, based on grants and, um, fundraisers.
So, maybe that's the route we go, um.
You said the first Saturday?
Yeah, so we normally go first Friday, uh, Saturday. I moved it one year because of the Spartans. We're supposed to be in the Big Ten Championship game. Uh, I don't have to worry about that anymore. So, you Michigan fans, you might have a problem conflicting schedule. But normally the Buckeyes and the Wolverines are better suited.
Go Buckeyes.
So, I'm okay with the first Saturday being on the Big Ten Championship Saturday, so.
How about you, Chief? Are you okay with it being on that Saturday?
Uh, we do need to discuss, so we do have the tree in the park. You know, Cecil's tree that, um, doesn't, we brought back cookies, we brought back hot cocoa. Uh, was lightly attended last year, but I think it's a tradition we need to continue. Uh, kind of could pick a grand marshal if you wanted, uh, add to it. I've looked at firework permits to try to see if we get fireworks. I've reached out to a few, like Waylon Handel, Sadie, Sadie Bass, other musicians. Maybe we can, only problem is downtown, we don't have a ton of electrical, but try to get a concert as well. Maybe we could use the museum. The museum ha, a committee has said they will do inside stuff, whether it's, uh, face painting again is, is back. We will look at bikes, um, but it's your call on what time things happen. I know during COVID, I was worried about the state coming in and shutting us down because there was probably a couple thousand people outside that were not socially distant. There, let's see, we do have the fire pits ready to go, working on lights downtown.
Historically, what's the gap that we did between lighting and the actual parade?
There was one year where, I think it was the COVID year where we extended the gap to so people would go, restaurants were hurting.
Right.
And so, we couldn't really do that. We were trying to get people to go places once it came back and try to get them funding. Um, and it was too long. I think we went an hour and a half, two hours between the tree lighting, so.
Maybe an hour, just keep.
An hour, an hour or a half hour, probably an hour. That way, I mean, like I said, lightly attended. The other idea is what if we put a huge tree downtown in the middle? I know we did one under the kiosk, but I'd like a, I don't know how feasible this would be with MDOT, but right where the clock is, like a, you know, a twenty footer right there. Um, I'm sure they'll say if it's got to be seventy-five feet away from the light and, or fifty feet away from the light. And it would have to be not blocking anybody's vision on the roads or to the lights, but.
One thing I would think would be.
What if we moved it one block over?
Yeah.
Into that boulevard, so it's in the middle, middle.
Right.
And do a big one there. I like that idea, guys.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be better, I think, because if you do it where the clock is and you're interfering with fifty-two.
And, you know, MDOT's not going to be as gracious. Uh, we did saw the MDOT issue of the speed sign last month. Uh, a gentleman came in last week with the sign in hand. Apparently, um, somebody, a drunk driver hit it about two months ago and the county never told us.
Oh, okay.
And so, we have the sign back. It is out in this spot, so you will be slowing down to thirty-five as you get into the village. It won't be at the freezer, so.
Did they pick up that twenty-five mile per hour sign that was waiting on the ground?
I don't know. It was a thirty-five mile per hour.
Somewhere between the bridge and North Street.
Was that one just for the construction?
Is it for the construction? Yeah.
I think it was just for construction.
Oh, no, this one was blasted in half, so. Um, your call, uh, what you think is best for you, your families, the village residents, getting people here.
I'm okay with the first Saturday in December.
I'm trying to think, you know, sometimes tree lighting does get dark early then, you know, five, five-thirty, six o'clock. I hate to think of those days now, but.
Right.
We're getting there.
I like it early like that.
Do you think at five-thirty to, and then six-thirty for the parade possibly?
That probably works.
Could you put that tree where the old museum used to be? I mean, like the old, the first, first museum we had?
The house?
Next to the, yeah, next to the.
By the state bank there.
Who owns that lot?
That's what I'm wondering, I don't know. Do you know what I'm talking about?
The bank own that now?
I'm looking, dude.
Who?
I think the bank own that?
I think they do.
Let's figure it out.
Yeah, we're getting stuff done. Take the ball home and bed. Yes, sir.
That's the, the bench, over that lot, at the backside of Frank's passing lot, that open lot.
No.
Eh?
No.
To the east?
No, he's talking about the one that we have to write to have him come low.
At the backside of Frank's passing lot, that open lot.
Two twenty-three East Bell, that, that has tall grass.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, Gail Ash, I believe she lives, um, Babcock Street, apartment forty-four in Wausau. And as far as seven. So, the property, the state bank, County State Bank owns all of those parcels. We did, I mean, we could probably reach out to them. We have a good rapport, great stuff, off the kayak launch, to see if we could put a tree there, um.
I think you have it on the boulevard or on that one.
I like the idea of kind of.
You can see it when you're driving through town or, you know, you pass through.
Yeah.
I don't mind the boulevard, but I'm wondering traffic.
I've seen photos from, you know, the early nineteen hundreds where villages would just put it in the road.
Yeah.
Like, in the middle of the road, I would, I dig it. Go back in time, that's what we talk about, but.
Well, I'd like to see it, you know, being seen, you know, to where it's off the beaten path.
Middle of Clinton and Saginaw. That'll be, and we'll put arrows out, go around the tree.
Just put cones, they, they like the cones.
You saw what happened with the, uh, place gate, right? Everybody ignored that.
Well, just like this, so, I, I, I think five-thirty, six-thirty, because people, time to go to the park, get down.
I think there's a rush, usually.
Nine, eight o'clock. The parade's probably over by seven-thirty and then we, last year, we had, I think, over thirty bikes to raffle off of all sizes and that probably took up the most time.
Most time, because we didn't have a lot of floats, I don't think.
Nope.
Compared to what we had.
We normally have anywhere from seven to twelve.
Twelve, right.
Um, the. Um, the talk was with the museum, to have the museum open from four to, you know, six prior.
Yeah.
To the parade. People went in there for warming station. They did have some different vendors in there for shopping and little things.
Cookie making for the kids and that kind of thing, that's where they stored the bikes.
You worried about the game?
No, I'm wondering about, um, cause like we, I used to, they used to do a block party, say block off the main street. I didn't know if, how, was, how you guys do your parade and stuff like that for Christmas festival and stuff. And the parade itself was an all along, the Melington, because they had so many entries.
Tractors?
Tractors, floats, trucks, everything.
They've been trying to get it to that one.
Yeah.
What they did too is they had a competition, they did a, a competition for floats or for tractors, is they lit up their tractors with Christmas lights and there was a judging of, and there was an award given to the, the best decorated tractor that came on. You could either drive the tractor or have, haul it on a trailer. But there was a competition to see who could decorate their tractor the best.
Well, we have that.
We, yeah, we do the same.
Yeah, we have the floats and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah.
And we do participation trophies, where everybody that participates gets one. And Andy Schlicker, who does the trophies, has agreed to do that again, um, as soon as we find out what, um, group is getting those funds, we can put their level and our level on there and go from there. Might as well.
I'll make a motion to hold the, uh, St. Charles Christmas Parade activities the first Saturday of December. Um, starting at five-thirty for the tree lighting and six-thirty for the parade.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Annual performance review.
Next month is my, my annual slash yearly performance evaluation. I included, uh, the form to fill out. If you bring it back next month, we'll go through it. And, uh, try to make me better so that the village is better.
You want us to fill these out ourselves?
He might be sorry.
Two bad marks right there.
You know how I know you're old? You just call them marks.
I am, I'm definitely old from my years.
Did you get marks in, did you get good marks in school?
Some mark.
There was article on the internet the other day about back when you got written grades, not the stuff they do today, you know?
I'm gonna hurry this up, I got your own water and flowers. When you need this back, wait.
What does it say on there? September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, tree bids.
So we have some problematic trees. Uh, obviously there's some discrepancy in who owns the property next to the museum and next to the vet's office. Uh, we do not own it, we have never owned it. Um, a few village residents took it upon themselves to take it over, make it beautiful. Uh, the parks committee during their five-year plan review, went into GIS, realized that we don't own it. Why are we doing a pocket park there for uh, extra work for our PPW who has bigger projects going on, especially now, especially when we're trying to get the place to give kayak launch, road and water sewer. Um, so there's a tree there that I would like, like to pay a third of, uh, to show that we're good neighbors. I'm working with the county equalization to get the property back to its rightful owners, which are, uh, the old museum, now Casey Northfleet's, uh, Kinder Care, we'll call it, and then Dr. Westervelt. Um, it reverts back to the old property, should be split right down the middle. Casey has a copy of GIS that showed that they updated it. My version on my computer does not show that. Um, but we do have a quote to, during that windstorm, it wiped out a tree, uh, where she's trying to put up a fence and, um, for her kids. Where she's, obviously she's gotta have a fence for her playground, so, um, I will take this quote to them to see if they're okay with that. Uh, the other, we received a lot of calls, there's a damaged tree after the windstorm in the park. It is messed up in some wires. Uh, ladies that walk it every morning call to let us know, often, and residents in that area, uh, so. Reached out to Thurston's and we reached out to, um, to Ryan from Apex Tree, uh, for a quote, and we received these. And obviously you can see where it falls and kind of what the work is to be done, but, uh.
So the one in the park, what is the plan with, it just says, for both of them, cut all woods, it's, well, Apex has cut all woods, six feet, eight feet, and then Thurston's is leaving the woods, what's the plan?
It's the same thing.
No, I know, what's the plan after it's been cut?
Uh, haul it to the brush pile in the yard. Does she want a bunch of white pine?
For DPW, would we move it then?
No, what they do is they cut the tree down, they chip all the brush, and they leave the wood in sixty-eight foot pieces and then we just come clean it up and haul it away.
Okay.
I mean, if the tree was out in the middle of the park, we can drop it, but it's right on the back side and there's some high tension lines there and it's, we're not messing with it. High likelihood it's not gonna go the way we would like it to.
So, yeah, it's three different quotes in one, essentially.
The, the park trees grow up, how about each one?
Um, yeah, and trimmed, removed, right. He's, he lives down, I don't, seven minutes.
Nelson.
He's just, uh, he's got the same Charles address.
Nelson Road, I see there now.
Nelson Road or something.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, set Thurston's bid.
House of Punks.
All those in favor?
You need a roll call or do we decide that?
Might as well.
Roll call?
Roll call, it's got money involved.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Paul Janerski is absent, Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris? And Lois Tylee is absent.
Where are the partner reports?
DPW, on the water end, we pumped about five point two million gallons, hundred and sixty-nine thousand gallons a day. We took their disinfection byproduct sample. We did have to repair waters, leaky water service at the freezer, uh, we got that taken care of. Our district engineer from Eagle come out and reviewed the water system and how we do our reports and make sure we're meeting the Safe Drinking Water Act. Uh, there was no issues noted. I think she was really happy with our improvements we're doing to the system. She did take note of that. Uh, the water main project is, I think it's progressing nicely. There's some challenges and unique things that were done back in the day, but we're moving along. Uh, sewer, we pumped, uh, about five point two million gallons, hundred and sixty-seven thousand gallons a day. We mowed the lagoons on the streets. Little roadside cleaning up that, that storm that took out those trees by the old museum that was a pretty isolated but strong spire in J Street area. There was three or four pretty good sized trees that were taken to the ground. Uh, one was on private property, the other two were on the right of way. Uh, pretty much everything else is routine maintenance and, uh, park, uh, they've been trying to pump up the old, uh, playground equipment as we find time. Questions, comments, concerns?
Um, I'd, I do, well, just, I was hoping you guys be a little more cognizant of some of the refuse bags. Or by say Thompson Boat Works there that, uh, beautification folks leave, sometimes I'll see them out there for a full week. You know, maybe be more cognizant of picking those up, so it doesn't look like trash.
We try, hopefully they know where we is, but if they don't.
There's a couple out there right now.
What's that?
There were two, at least, as of yesterday, I thought.
Yeah, I know, but the one flower weeding person, they're not real good at communicating with us. One is, one isn't, so.
Are you supposed to pick those up?
We pick them up and they let us know where they're at, yeah. We have two of them returned, the ones we return back to the village and they come and get them and.
They're right by the road.
Yeah, but they're easy to see, even with the green.
No, we, we will definitely make note of that, so. And I, I think, uh, the one gallon we hired, she's doing a pretty good job of block weeding. I mean, that's seen a pretty good improvement since she started, I think. The one issue I see, it's not big, but it's, some people like to plant milkweeds in their flower gardens. I think they're flower gardens, not milkweed gardens. I understand they're for butterflies, but there's probably better places to plant them. Some of those people trying to give her direction and they're not paying her wages, I think, I understand, so.
That's what they eat, that's what they're poisoning us, yeah.
I mean, there's, you know, a lot of better places they could do it than put them in a flower garden.
Right.
And I think she's doing a pretty good job. That's all I have.
Um, we just, um, we don't give an activity, just go through the reports.
Police department?
We have the list of calls, uh, one change. For the, the day of the active summary, um, the one thing that's not missing was the, the citation that were written for the month. We actually wrote seven. Um, for some reason it didn't show up on the report. I emailed him and talked about it and he said it was a coding issue, should be fixed for next month. Um, but that would, a couple, when, a couple months ago we started, we talked about the amount of traffic stops as opposed to the amount of tickets that were written in, whereas the ratio was not very good, so looking at the ratio now would be fifteen stops to seven citations, which is almost fifty percent ratio. Which goes along with my quality over quantity in terms of traffic stops. So I think we're kind of hitting the mark on that. Um, any questions about any of the calls on the sheets?
And I'd like to say thanks again to the chief. He's been spending a lot of time out on our water main project doing traffic enforcement. It's a night and day difference when he's out there and when he's not out there for the safety of that crew. There's a lot of people that have nobody got for construction workers. But thanks again to the chief, I do appreciate that, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you, did you find out if, uh, Allison's gonna pick up any more days or?
Uh, for the rest of this month, she texted me, said she can't for the rest of this month because she's got scheduling things going on and she's going away, so for the rest of this month, no, she won't be able to. Um, well, shy for next month. Um, Ethan, for the scheduling, he has said that, um, after, I think it's after the second week in August, he will then pick up every Friday shift that's, he's not regularly scheduled for it, so at least Friday nights will be covered. Um, and then we'll go, whatever we can do with the Saturdays after that. Um, in terms of coverage, that's, that's one of the big issues right now. Um, so far I have three postings on M Coles, which is the state website for where people go for police officer jobs. Um, I have a part-time listing, I have an SRO listing, and I just posted the full-time position. Uh, within that full-time position, we've, I've done some, some digging and, and looking into a sponsorship. I called Delta about their next academy class and they have one coming up in the end of Au- August, I think it's the twenty-third when it starts. He didn't tell me the exact number, but the amount of students that are there, all but two were already sponsored. So that means if we were to try to pick from that pool, we would have two to choose from. And then when I talked to him, he said one of them's looking like he's gonna get picked up by a county, I think he said, it was a county to the north, I can't remember the name of it, but the other, he said the other one, he said, I've been doing this for a long time, and he says, I'll be surprised if they make it through the academy. So basically, there's nobody that, out of this next Delta class, that we would be able to hire out of them for brand new people. Typically, I'd like to get somebody that has experience, it'd be easier on us to put them back on the road, but when you're gonna have, have stuff out there and you're not getting anything, the next route is to go through brand new people. It's the only option we have right now. Um, in terms of sponsorship, within looking into that, that part of it, it'd be like nine thousand dollars to sponsor somebody through the academy. And then with the sponsorship comes, you have to, you're employing them, so you have to pay them a wage. Now, the wage is set and is determined by what you agree upon when you hire this person. It can be the minimum wage, it can be seventeen dollars, it could be twenty dollars an hour. The kicker for this is, M Coles has grants now and it's going till twenty twenty-six or until they run out of money. Where you sponsor somebody through the academy, you pay them their wages, you document it, you send it to M Coles as an invoice, and then they reimburse you one hundred percent for it. So we will have upfront costs, but we will be reimbursed for it in the end, so it won't really cost us anything to get this new employee. Uh, some of the things that the guy talked me about, about looking for people, because a lot of times, he says he sees it, these small towns sponsor people, and then they get trained and then they leave. It's a fact, we, you know, we've gone off trying to find somebody that's, that lives around here that's gonna stay around here. So he said, uh, maybe mention it to, like, he said he saw, found, people had bad luck with the fire department. So I mentioned, I spoke to Jamie about it the other day when we were at the, an event for a little bit. And there was one gentleman there that kind of piked up and answered some questions, asked some questions about it, maybe had some interest, I don't know. I don't know if there's anybody else that's in that position in the fire department that may wanna do something like that, but that, that's one of the first things to check, but then it's just to branch out and see what we can do. So if you do go the sponsorship route, it's gonna cost us somebody upfront, but we will be reimbursed for it one hundred percent. Then it's a matter of figuring out a contract with this person to see what we can legally in a contract to get them to stay for X amount of years before they can really leave.
A lot of the problem current is they sign a contract to get through school and they stay a year and then they piece out. Or you sign a contract for two years or three years, some places are trying for five, um, bigger cities, um, and people are just gone. And so then you spend the time, your lawyer's fees going after them. And there's no, there's nothing written or any statute that says they have to, really. It's just kind of of your word.
It's a risk you take at this point right now with the hiring pool, like there's just, it's not there. I mean, I can remember when I got out of the academy, I couldn't find a job because I didn't have any experience. So that's why I moved out of state for five years, came back, and now it's, doesn't matter if you have any experience, you can go wherever you want to and name your price. Right now, it's just totally different. So that's one of the humps we're trying to get over. I got a call into the Mott Community College, they do academies too. I wanted to hear back from him to see if what his next class is like or what it's gonna be, to see maybe there's a candidate out of there or not. Um, in terms of that, um, in preparation of a new hire, in case we go that route, we need to have somebody that's FTO certified, so I'm sending Ethan to the FTO class, which is a four-day class through the state. Um, you don't technically have to have it, but if you were to send somebody through FTO, train and put them on the road and then something happens, they're, they could legally come back because we didn't have a certified officer, FTO officer, train them, you know, they, not that we're not certified, we can't train them, but it was not on the books for the state, so. He's gonna be going to that class at the end of August, so that's gonna be up and running. We already have the books, the documentation to run it, so if you were to start now, we can start it off and then he can get a certification later on. But it doesn't look like we're gonna have anybody start anytime soon. Uh, vehicles, uh, yeah. So, the new one had to go back to the dealership again, um, it had a check engine light come on, uh, last week, be, middle, beginning of last week. Took it up to M and J Auto just to run it through the scanner. It was picking up a lean fall, it was a running lean. So he's, you know, I called the dealership, yeah, just bring it in on the certain day. I brought it in, had it tested, okay, bring it back the next day, well, I've done it today. Well, it took them three days to get it done. Because they couldn't figure out what the problem was, and what it comes down to is they found a wire that was rubbed open. And so they're thinking that it was shorting out, setting the, setting the sensor off, that it was running lean. So they had to take the wire completely out and reroute it completely through the motor into a different spot. So it was all covered under warranty, but we're out with the vehicle for three days. Um, I gotta get with Marguerite to get the list of the fixes they supposedly did on the old one, because while I was driving it last couple of days, I've noticed it sounds like the shocks are out on it. I assumed that that was part of the fixing in the first part, but there's some definite clunking noise coming from that old one when you're driving it. Twenty miles an hour down Main Street. I assumed that that was part of the fixing in the first part, but there's some definite clunking noise coming from that old one when you're driving it. Twenty miles an hour down Main Street, every bump you hit, you can hear it, it sounds like. I thought the cage was, I thought something was rattling in the front, like the speaker or something, so I got out and checked. No, everything's solid. So it's obviously something within, uh, the front part of the vehicle that's clunking right now, so it just never put through that one for some reason. I don't know. Um, in terms of new vehicles, we've checked with the dealership. We got a price quote back on a Tahoe. I've also heard, uh, there's more incentives in a police truck. If you get one like that, they do make them. Chevy has one, Ford has one. The ones that we're getting right now are through Chevy. Um, the police chief in Rich, Richling, he has a, a truck. He had it out here one day when he came over to talk to me. It's pretty nice. The one advantage is that I think about when I think about a truck is, I talk to lots of people and they talk about the hunting seasons we have here. And the, the calls that we have, deer hunters fall out of the tree stand, duck hunters in the, in the fields, that Explorer's not gonna make it out there. It's just not. It's too low to the ground and y- you need something like a truck like that to get out there. A Tahoe, maybe, but they're still a bit lower the ground. This what, their, their weight differential's not meant to that. That's kinda one of the main advantages of having a truck in this, in this area as opposed to a Tahoe. Um, also for events, you can, you can flip the top back and have people in the back of the bed and toss out candy or stuff like that, or it's good for that as well. There's, there's some, there's really not a lot of negatives to it, except for the turning radius on a truck as opposed to a Tahoe. You know, like, the fifty-two, I could probably make the turn with the four lanes, but if I was on a side street, I'd have to do a three pointer. It's about the only bad part about it. Another good thing is resale values of trucks are a lot better. Always a lot better. Just resell a truck than anything else, so.
Do they have a police package?
Yeah, it comes with a police package, police pursuit package, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's something, it's not as, it's kinda like when Tahos first came out, where everybody was afraid to get a Tahoe. Well, now everybody's getting a Tahoe. I think there's gonna be a lot more trucks in the future. Um, just right now, it's just something really new, and they're just not well-known. Not a lot of people have them.
I saw one healthy yesterday.
You have a ballpark on the trucks, I know.
I gotta go, he says I have to go up there and sit down and build it with him before he give me the numbers. So I just gotta make my way to the dealership and sit down with him for an hour to build it.
Tahos are looking at fifty-four.
So the way he talked, he wasn't, he says he's not sure until we build it to get the numbers, but he says with the amount of incentives, it can either be, it's not gonna be more than a Tahoe after the incentives, it'll be either equal or somewhat less. But then we also have the two vehicles to trade in on it as well to help out with that cost. So that was just something to run by and think about. But the order has to go next month in September. Because you only order one month out of the year to get them for the following year. So whichever one we go with, if we're gonna do a new vehicle that next year, which I think we should with the way this old Explorer's going, we gotta order it next year, next month. So I don't know if we have, if it's something that has to be done before the next meeting, if, if you have to give hard approval to whatever one we choose or what it may be. I don't know how that works with this council, as opposed to my last one. I'm not used to that, so.
Remember for a roll call vote, and then we can budget for it.
Body cameras, the new body cameras are up and running. Finally got VC three, um, to sit down with me and got to talk to the right person to do what they were doing. Took about hour and a half and those are up and running now. Um, last thing to do is get the in-car camera synced, which I gotta call Provision to sit down and do that with him and just get, and Jay to not be on another call when I'm in the office and vice versa, so. I'm just making contact with them. That shouldn't take very long. And then those are all set and running, up and running, ready to go. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I have one. Um, going back to hiring officers. If we did like a contract where they have to, you know, we'll put you through the academy, but you have to stay this amount of time. Can you, can we go through the village attorney to find out how we could do that, or do we go through?
We would have to, I think, yeah. In order for it to be legal.
Okay.
I think we would have to, yeah.
M Coles could do that.
I think it'd probably be the village attorney and the best route there is if they do leave, then, you know, make sure that the uniform, the equipment, the, uh, the vests, everything is ours, so that we're not losing.
Yeah, that's all usually when you, when you sign a co- when you sign basically, um, the equipment stuff that's on there, at least the one that I have, that I have that make up is, you're signing for this equipment, but everything that's got our patches on it, our emblems, it all comes back to us. And it's all listed on what they, what we give them, so when they do leave, we can come back and say, we don't have this. Where's this at?
And maybe there's a way that say that they have to refund us an extra amount of dollars.
That was, I was wondering too, if we could do something like that. If they stay a year, then it's a certain percentage that is paid, paid back, second year, third year, up to how many years they have to pay a certain percentage back of that money.
That's supposed to be my.
The problem is, is.
If we get the grant for that, then we're not losing.
We're not losing anything. It's just the, it's just the funding of when they're on the, on the road and everything like that. So that's the other thing too, is really we, we can't go back at them for the sponsorship because we already got refunded for that. So. Yeah.
Maybe we could come up with a, just a price, you know, if you leave before this time, you owe us this much money or?
Well, like vests and stuff, that's, that's pretty pricey. It's like twelve hundred bucks for a vest, you know, and stuff, and certain things like that. And then you could probably figure it factor in the hours that Ethan would have to do for the training, you know, that could add into that, something like that maybe. But that would have to go through the village attorney.
Yeah, and make this future department pay us for it. Time, bus, something, possibly. And that's where it's going. Every municipality that saw the discussions are going on.
I, I don't have a problem with doing a sponsorship. I mean, it's coming down to that.
That's why we're sending.
That's how I went to the academy. I was sponsored by your department.
I sent a Zoom meeting the other day, it was myself and chief from Frankl, we were the first two in there. We were just chit-chatting and we talked about hiring. Basically, all we're doing right now is, is picking from each other. You know, there's, there's not anybody new coming up that's got experience. It's, this person's gonna offer you a warning someone to go over here, then this person, you know, that's all we're doing. We're just all bidding each other right now is what it is.
Right.
It's sad. There's, there's nothing, you can't force people to go to the academy.
There was, there was a time where there were so many officers that you could say, okay, if you wanna come to our department, this is what we're paying you.
Yeah.
And, you know, they would take it. Now, it's like, if you want me to come to your department.
You're gonna pay me what I want in order for me to come. Yeah, it's way, it's just, the total one eighty.
Right.
It's, it's crazy. I don't know, I don't see a time frame where we're getting any better, unless you're the way that, that the world protects us.
Maybe there's a high school senior, that's what they wanna do, and maybe we grab somebody from here, you know, maybe hit.
Working in school.
Maybe we have a, they have a job for career fair or something. See if there's any interest. We'll definitely head up.
You have to be, you have to be twenty-one, go to the academy, so.
At least make contact.
Well, they could start college, you know.
Cause a lot of times you gotta sell them on coming home.
Right. Maintain a relationship with them.
Uh, we had a, a tech center in, in Tuscaloosa County. I don't know if they have something right here that the kids go to school with, and one of the programs was an actual police school, and that's where a lot of the, the sponsorship kids come from, from over there. I don't know if they have a tech center here.
Uh, I think SCC and SAG and all, they do law enforcement, criminal justice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they? Oh, okay.
That'd be a place to start with, is get in contact whoever runs that program and talk to them about it. Senior, if there's anybody from our area that goes to there. Cause that's how we got a lot of our exhilaries in Millington, was they came down and worked for us for auxiliary, which basically they just blocked road, but just getting their foot in the door and doing stuff like that. So we had a kid that started when he was seven, sixteen or seventeen, sixteen, and he was with us up until he went to the police academy and went to someplace else because we, we couldn't train him there. Anything else?
Building inspector, cool enforcement, move down here.
So only two permits, as you see in the building report, which is, used to be a good month for us, uh, pre Scott. And then, uh, the complaint log, uh, we received, um, we worked with the attorney and Scott went out this morning and put notices on doors, uh, for, uh, two, the top two lots. And, um, so that is our first initial contact to really go after them legally, uh, with backing from our attorney and a notice to them to clean it up. So it started over. We've waited a long time for this, but, uh, the work has begun.
So he can, they can just, he can just deliver them? He doesn't have to sign up?
He delivered, hand-delivered, put it on their door with photo evidence.
It says here, nu- uh, new notices must be set for attorney. That's why it's one of the, they're gonna have to send a new notice too.
They're just per attorney, not from the attorney.
That's what, uh, Gary said.
Basically coaching them through how to do this.
Apparently he was out burning something at five thirty in the morning the other morning, cause I got a text message at five thirty in the morning about it. I just don't know how many sits there and looks at all that stuff. He claims that's his livelihood.
Look like the wire. Well, you know, I don't know if they're, he's probably like, sells copies of nineteen eight sixteen he got, so. He's not, he's not wrong.
So you're encouraging him. Thanks, Mike.
Last public comment? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Need adjourned.